All right, the live stream link is, is going and we are, we are also now recording.
Okay, Ryan, can you hear me correct?
Ryan Wesworth, this is Lemke. I cannot hear you. I'll, I'll try it when I'm done here. I can do that.
Eddie, this is Bob Sander. I've lost the video.
So you can't see the screen being shared?
No.
Do you want to try and leave the meeting, come back in?
Yes, let me do that. Okay.
Okay, Eddie, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, everybody else can hear me as well?
Yes, I can hear you now, Ryan. This is Lemke.
All right, this is Ryan Holte, BCA Vice Chair, and I'm calling tonight's Pierce Township Board of Zoning Appeals hearing to order. I'm filling in for Chair Greg Gentile, who apparently is still on injured reserve someplace. With that said, I call this meeting to order, and can I get a roll call, Eddie?
Sure. And Mr. Sander is in the meet, he was in the meeting, but he was having a technical issue, and so he has left and he's going to be coming back in. So I don't know if you want to just, if we want to hold for him, I think he intends on participating.
All right, we can give him a minute. Sure.
Okay.
Eddie, while we're waiting, can you identify M and MS for us, so we know who's here?
Sure. Hi, M, I'm unmuting you here. Can you give us your full name, please?
Yes, this is, this is Ed Ferrugia from Beaver Creek, I'm sorry, from Glen Mary Development LLC. I'm here with Joe Ferrugia from Glen Mary Development LLC and the engineer of record Doug Smith from McGill Smith Punchin'.
Thanks, Ed. We actually have someone else in the meeting with their, their name is just M, and so we're trying to figure out who they are.
I got you, sorry.
Hi, M, can you hear us? Well, we're not getting a response, but in the event that they want to participate, they can raise their hand using the participant panel, or they can press star nine to raise their hand. So yeah, otherwise, I guess they might, they may just be listening in here.
Thanks, Eddie, and I think Mr. Sander, you're back online with us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, with all of that out of the way, let's call this meeting to order. How about a roll call?
Okay, Mr. Sander, here, Mr. Holte, here, Mr. Lemke, here, Mrs. Holman. I know she's here.
Here, here.
All righty.
Okay.
Mr. Gentile, Mr. Hayes.
Here.
And Mr. Burr. And we have a quorum.
Eddie, ready? As we always do, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance against the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, has the, the board had a chance to review the minutes from our previous meeting on August 31st? Any comments or changes you wish to submit?
Eddie Fred Hayes here in the public comment section. The third paragraph down, it says that Mr. Rose stated he does like the location of the addition. I think that's Mr. Rice. As, as identified more particularly in the first paragraph there. And as I recall, he really said he did not like the location of the addition if placed in the rear yard. I remember that one specifically, and I almost wanted to, to explain to him is that there's no restrictions that the Board of Zoning Appeals can put on an addition in the backyard because it was, it was within all zoning regulations. So I think it's, I think it should say that he does not like the location.
So I have Mr. Jerry and Gail Rice at 3609 El Rigo stated they do have an issue with the addition in the rear yard, but are okay with the, with the placement in the front. That, that's what I have. Is that, am I looking at the right page?
And that's correct, but go down two more paragraphs after the paragraph on Mr. Lubring. And then there's Mr. McCarthy drew the property profile in the back of the yard. And then it says Mr. Rose stated he does like the location.
Okay.
I, I think that's Mr. Rice. And I don't remember a Mr. Rose. I think that's Mr. Rice, and, and what he stated, as I remember, was he did not like the location in the backyard.
Okay.
Is that what everybody else remembers, or do you recall?
I do not recall, Mr. Hayes, I apologize.
I don't either.
Yeah, I don't either. I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Hayes' recollection.
I can, I can take it, I can take that out, because at one point, we already say that Mr. Rice, Mr. Rice confirms what you said earlier on, so it might have just been an oversight, and I'll just, I'll just take it out.
That'd work too. That's fine.
Okay.
So Eddie, we don't need to make a motion for that change, correct? We can just submit a motion to approve the minutes then, pending any other comments or feedback?
Yeah, we approve the minutes as amended, as with that amendment.
Correct.
I second Bob Sander.
All right. All right, so roll call. Mr. Lemke.
Yes.
Mrs. Holman.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes.
Yes.
Mr. Sander.
Yes.
And Mr. Holte.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay, we have a case for us tonight, case number AC 2020-009. This is an appeal from Glen Mary Development, and at this time, I'd like to ask those representing Glen Mary Development to identify themselves, and then we'll, we'll swear them in for the proceedings. Joe Ferrugia. I'm Ed Ferrugia with Glen Mary Development. I'm Doug Smith with McGill Smith Punchin'.
And Rick Palo, their attorney, Glen Mary's attorney.
Thank you, gentlemen. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that you will tell the truth in these proceedings? I do. Very much. All right, Eddie, could you start us with a staff presentation on the case?
Yep, absolutely. So the application you have before you is an application for an appeal regarding the Amelia zoning ordinance by way of moratorium 2019031 as amended, section 152064 modifications whereby staff classified the applicant's submittal as a major modification. This application was submitted by Glen Mary Development LLC for property located approximately 390 feet southwest of the intersection of State Route 125 and Glen Mary Drive. The property in question is approximately 35 acres. It's currently vacant, but a portion of the property does have full approval to construct single-family dwellings. That, that is along the southern portion of the property. The northern half of the property is the portion that has the condominium slash land dominium project that is currently in, currently under review. The zoning is currently planned unit development, and the land use is proposed as single-family homes attached and detached. So brief history, the preliminary development plan, which are Exhibits One and Four, were approved by the Amelia Planning Commission in May 2019 with four conditions. On July 18th, 2019, the village council accepted the planning commission's recommendation for approval. The preliminary development plan approval was for 65 single-family dwellings, 120 multifamily condos. And this was adopted via 201938 Village Ordinance. In November of 2019, the village of Amelia dissolved. There, in March 2020, the zoning commission then reviewed and approved the final development plan, which is Exhibit Two, in accordance with moratorium resolution number 202001. Moratorium resolution 202001 is essentially an exemption document, which is, which is also within your packets. It's, it's an exemption document, allowing this final development plan review to take place through the moratorium that was, that was placed on Amelia after the dissolution. In July of 2020, staff reviewed the applicant's July design plan submittal, which is Exhibit Six, in conformance with, with said moratorium, including the Amelia zoning ordinance per 152061. The final development plan was approved with 65 single-family units and 96 condominium, condominium units in, which was broken down as four units in 24, 24 buildings, which you can see on the northern portion of this property here in question. And this is the master document for which the design plan is reviewed against. This is the design plan submitted to both Clermont County as well as Pierce Township staff. Pierce Township is the, generally the first entity to review for zoning. During the zoning process, we noticed that the multifamily units, which you can see on the northern portion of the property, have little lots, four lots each, splitting each of the 24 buildings, as you can see above. Final development and the design plan showing these smaller lots. The issue noted was that the design plan submitted does not appear generally compliant with the Glen Mary Park Final Development Plan. Specifically, the design plan features the creation of lots not contemplated during the preliminary or final development plan phases. Compliance with 152064 is required per resolution 202001. Now, in the event that the proposed modification were classified as a minor modification, the design plan would be reviewed administratively, as opposed to returning to the zoning commission and Board of Trustees. And staff, staff determined that this was a major modification. Now, the potential conflicts, staff sees essentially three, three primary issues of, of potential conflict. The first being the lot size. The new lots are approximately 1,945 square feet each, and they fail to meet the minimum lot sizes contemplated either at any of the prior meetings or in the PUD approval, which states that the minimum lot sizes are 5,980 square feet. The setbacks, as approved on the PUD of 25 in the front, five in the side, 30 in the rear, cannot be enforced on the new small lots, as evidenced by the fact that a number of the lots have zero lot line circumstances in which a side lot line of zero is shown, which essentially means that the property line runs right through the actual physical structure, which, again, that was not contemplated at the preliminary or final development plan stage for the multi, multi-unit buildings. And the open space, the, the design plan details 27.4% open space. However, staff considered this questionable due to the allocation of private yard areas not previously considered. Final development plan had 25.1% open space required and shown. So functionally, what this amounts to is that, as far as lot size is concerned, staff is not empowered to enable the creation of new lots that are not allowed by right or that meet the ordinance or meet an ordinance standard, particularly in a, in a PUD process. In the event that external modifications, additions, or additions were proposed, the setbacks thereby become an issue where a non-conforming circumstance would create a number of obstacles to facilitating a permit. For example, if the applicant was unable to meet the 30-foot rear setback that was generalized in the first approval, in the event that someone were to try and add on to one of the multi, multi-tenant buildings, we don't, we not have a clean way to actually review that, because the setbacks were not generally intended for the multifamily. And finally, the open space may not be reduced, except for in accordance with the ordinance. Based upon the proposal, it appeared evident that the open space would be reduced in the circumstance, barring further clarification from the applicant in the calculation. And the applicant has submitted additional documentation addressing all of these matters. Now, in all cases, the point remains that the ordinance appears to be quite clear on the limits of staff discretion in these matters. Under no circumstances is viable for staff to agree to a particular new lot size, a new set of setbacks, or open space reductions in the absence of a board presence, particularly in a PUD process. Ultimately, the primary risk in these circumstances pertains to the duties of the various commissions and boards, and ensuring that the allocated processes are followed as closely as possible. In all cases, a balance is to be maintained between the sanctity of the review process and the intent of the regulations. Staff is required to abide as closely as possible to the literal interpretation of the regulations. The action required is as follows. BCA shall make a decision on the appeal application in accordance with 152.259, including the grounds for such decision. Such, such decision shall consider whether the board agrees that the modifications proposed are major or minor modifications. These, the modifications are further explained in Exhibit Eight in your packets. Now, staff and the applicant, of course, are available, and I know that the applicant has a number of, of slides and perhaps a presentation as well.
Yeah, at this time, who's going to be representing Glen Mary relative to the applicant presentation? It will be me, Ed Ferrugia. Okay, Ed, and Eddie, do you have Ed's slides that you can put up for him?
I do. It's, so Mr. Ferrugia, I, I included all of the slides that you requested, and I also have the documents from the email that I received tonight, where I can share those at any time you want, as well, I can share screen them.
Okay, I'm just, just out of curiosity, was the, was the, this factual legal issue and the, the other stuff shared prior to this evening with the, the board? Or is this the first time seeing it?
It, it was placed in there, it was placed in the Dropbox online. But it, you know, it may be worth going over if you, if you'd like to do that.
Absolutely.
Mr. McCarthy, can I interject just one, one comment?
Sure.
Rick Palo, this, the document, and I think Mr. Ritchie will recognize this also. The, the document, the first document was actually generated by Mr. Keating and sent to me to give some background on to the, the factual issues and legal issues relative to a switch from a condominium to a land dominium. So in respect of any questions, issues regarding the legal aspect of this document, I'd be more than happy to address those.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Palo. So I think, just to kind of start things off, I kind of wanted to give everybody an idea of what happened. You know, we basically took the approved final development plan and added lot lines to it. And the purpose of doing so would be to be able to convey to a, the end user as be simple versus as a condo conveyance. When we initially submitted this change to Mr. McCarthy and the staff, we got a lot of questions, mainly about maintenance, about the, the yard area that's on the new plan. And I don't know if everybody has a copy of that, or Eddie, if you could click on that new plan, as I'd like to just start with that, just to kind of make sure everybody's clear on what we're looking at. But on the proposed record plaque that we have, we've got, we've added language about the maintenance. I mean, the best way to look at this is that we have.
Ed.
Yes.
It's Rick again. I mean, I, you know, I think the board members may be operating in a little bit of a vacuum. You know, I don't mean that in, in any respect whatsoever, other than, you know, all of us, but the board members have been up to our eyeballs on this. Might be helpful to the board as to just, you know, going right in as to why the change was made and what the exact change is.
Right, yeah, the, the change was made in order to convey these condos, these now land dominium lots, as be simple versus as a condominium conveyance. The reason why is because of, there's financing issues with condos that are very restricted, which I'll really let Rick go into that, if you'd like to kind of discuss that portion.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, Ed. I, I, I want to just spend just a second as to what, what the driving factor was on this. This came from D.R. Horton. Eddie, in your packet, I think there's a letter from D.R. Horton as to why they requested this change subsequent to all the, subsequent to the approvals that we had had. And, and, and it gets a little bit complex, a little bit into the weeds. When you have a condominium, in order for the government, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, to acquire that loan from a lender, the project, a condominium project has to be approved by Fannie Mac, Freddie Mac, Fannie Mae, as well as HUD and FHA. So the project itself would be approved, where if I were to buy a condominium and I go to Union Savings Bank and get a loan, then without question, Fannie, Freddie, FHA slash HUD can purchase that loan. So Union Savings Bank may make 100 loans. They'll sell, they'll, they'll warehouse that, those loans. Those will be packaged in hundred million dollar tranches. Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, whomever will acquire those loans. What the government did in October of 19, if I recall, they changed the rules on FHA slash HUD loans, where in order to, to, for FHA, which typically those are lower down payment loans, as everyone knows, you know, 3%, 5% loans, somebody puts that down, FHA will, will finance that, they will acquire that loan. So what FHA did in October of 19 is they required an entire project to have a certi, final certificate of occupancy, so it's move-in ready. Well, developers, or I'm sorry, builders got around that by phasing a development, where they would have, say, a four-unit building, that'll be one phase. But for all of those units in one building, they have to have a final certificate of occupancy before you can sell that loan to a, to Fannie or to FHA. So I, I think a light bulb went off on, over at D.R. Horton, and said, whoa, wait a minute, you know, this is going to be really problematic. Any suggestions, Mr. Ferrugia? And that suggestion was through Mr. Smith and through Ed and Joe and myself, well, why don't we create a land dominium, which is nothing more than a fiction. It's a made-up name, just like a townhome would be. And it's, it's, it's literally a hybrid between a condominium and a townhome, where the, the essential difference is the lot itself. So Fannie and Freddie and FHA don't require a pre-approval because it has a lot, because it's not a condominium. And a land dominium is essentially a condominium with a lot. 100% of the lot and the building, the exterior of the building, will be maintained by the HOA, including roofs, including landscaping, including snow pushing, any and all maintenance within that envelope of the lot in the building.
Rick, this is Ray Lemke. Can I interject and ask a question right here, please?
Yes, Mr. Lemke.
The, explain to me if, if there is a difference. The difference in how title to the properties are held under the original condominium proposal that was approved versus the land dominium that you're now talking about. Would each, would title to each of these new lots be held by a different entity?
It would be held by the homeowner, Ray.
Okay, so if I'm, in other words, if I'm in, if I buy one of these units, I have an undivided, what, 25% interest in the building and the land?
Not, in, in a condominium, you would have an undivided interest, yes. In a land dominium, and I think Eddie had alluded to this, a zero lot line. In a land dominium, the lot would go through the, the building, literally. That, that lot would be drawn by Mr. Smith at McGill Smith and encompass the building and the lot, so that's your legal description, as opposed to an undivided.
I'm sorry, so then, if I'm following you, if, if I own one of these, and I, I thought, I, I thought I saw something earlier that said there were four units per building. So if, if I own one of the units, one of these buildings, I have a quote lot.
Correct.
Which runs partially through the building, that I individually own and see simple.
That's correct.
Okay, as opposed to a condominium where everybody collectively owns the, everything from the outside walls. Okay, that's what I was trying to be clear on. Thank you, Mr. Palo.
As long as we're into it this far, Fred Hayes here, can I build on that one and say that the new lot line that is down around 2,000 square feet is pretty much the footprint of the building, plus a little bit, maybe five feet outside of the building itself. As compared to the previous lot lines, included some front yard and some rear yard, which was never really a title to the condominium owner. It was really in the condominium, a common ownership. Am I understanding the difference correctly there, and if not, help me?
That, that's correct. So to, to further amplify a little bit, the, all of the real estate around the building in a condominium is open space, meaning that it is owned by the Condominium Association. That five feet to seven feet around the building now is owned by the homeowner. With the homeowners association having an easement over that lot, so it will maintain full, complete control over that lot. The, the function is exactly the same as a condominium. And, and again, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but you know, the, the only reason, the only, the, the driving reason for this is the, the relatively new FHA and HUD requirements. I'm not going to get into the Fannie Mae requirements, which even further complicated. which even further complicated. That's just not, I don't think that'd be good for this discussion.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Palo. Ed, did you want to continue?
You know, honestly, Rick did a really good job of kind of summing up everything. I was going to kind of go through. I mean, the big thing that I think we're trying to get across to everybody is that, is on the maintenance, because that seemed to be a major question that kept coming up when our discussions with Pierce Township about, you know, the maintenance, what if somebody wants to put in a fence, you know? When this was a traditional condo development, the idea of somebody putting a fence up or putting a storage thing, a structure in their backyard, or any sort of modification or improvement was really never considered because there was no lot lines. Now we have lot lines, but still, as Rick said, it's controlled by the HOA and any modification to the exterior, including that yard area that they own, is prohibited. It's going to function the exact same way as a condominium, except the ownership of the each individual lot, of each individual unit, I should say, will be be simple. There's, I know that in our part of the staff report, you know, the, there was a mention of open space that we lose some. And I don't know, we need to get into that, because I think Eddie may have touched on that, but our open space is at 27.4% right now. I think we're at 25.1 previous to this. So to the surrounding property, I mean, we're, our goal and intent of all this is to really stay in with the, you know, within the spirit of the original final approved plan. Nothing is changing except for those lot lines that we created.
Ed, and one, thank you, I thought that was a good explanation. And I think in looking at Eddie's, Mr. McCarthy's staff report, another issue, or maybe Doug, if you can address the setbacks.
Yes, the setbacks were just basically created. One, there was an existing, I'll start with each lot line. Or that the front lot line of the building is, was basically set by the location of the previous ingress egress easement that encumbered the private roadway. So we held that easement line as being the front lot line. Yeah, Eddie, if you could pull up a drawing, that would be terrific. Can you zoom in, Eddie, or? Hey, Ed, if you could, could you pull up the design plan sheet C 101?
Is that working for you? Is that enough zoom?
Yeah, that'll work, that'll work. So, so we established the front lot line, we just held the ingress egress easement along the private drives. That was, that ingress egress easement was shown on the final development plan. We held that line. And quite frankly, the building setback is exactly the same as the approved final development plan when you consider the front yard, the front building setback to the street, to the back of curb. From the back of curb to the building is 25 feet. That distance didn't change. The only thing that changed was that we added a lot line in front of it and we therefore, that distance, that front yard setback is now 12 feet. So that established the front yard. The side yards, as you can see, the interior units, the lot line will split the party walls of each unit and therefore will be a zero lot line. So that established those, those lines. Now, the exterior side yards, there's, there's a side yard entry that comes down around the building and the two end units, you enter from the, from the side of the building. And we've got a sidewalk that comes through there. We got some, you got utilities. So we held what we thought was a reasonable distance off of the building for the side yard. And we came up with a side yard distance, I believe is, I don't remember, but it's approximately nine feet. So that established the side yards for the exterior units. And then the side, the rear yard is, was basically, again, keeping a reasonable distance from the building and the patio. There's patios on the rear of these units. And so we kept a reasonable distance that still will allow ingress egress around the patio. And basically, that's what created our lot. And is if you, Eddie, if you can go to sheet C 101, again, is that down in the bottom right corner?
Let's see here. I don't know, so what I have is I have the sheets that were just,
Okay.
Like sheets from the design plans, but I can pull up.
Well, it was in your exhibit. It was in your, I think it's your exhibit.
Doug, if I could ask you just a simple question that I think we all know the answer to. So if you take the lot line from the building as opposed to the land minimum lot, from the building to either the back of curb, the public road, the easement, that is exactly the same as what was previously approved?
That's correct. And like I stated previously, the distance from the back of curb to the front of the building is the same as we previously had approved in the final development plan. That's correct.
Hey Doug, did you say sheet C 101?
C 10, yes, C 101, yes.
Okay. One second here.
Okay, great. Now, if you go to the lower right corner, that's the typical lot configuration right there. That's how we establish, and that's basically what I just described to you. That's the typical lot configuration right there. Again, the building's in the exact same location as the approved final development plan. The only thing we did was put lot lines on the plan. That's all we did. And then, and then, and to, you know, then there became issues with maintenance and and how that area around the building was going to be handled with maintenance. And then we just, we put an easement around that, a no build zone. We refer to it on the plat as a non-disturbance zone. That's right. And that's to be maintained by the HOA, and that is defined in the HOA documents. Just so there's no question on who maintains that lawn, that yard area.
Is this an appropriate time to pose another question?
Absolutely.
Again, I think this question is addressed to Mr. Palo. Mr. Palo, is there any, let me rephrase. Are we all in agreement that the question of major modification versus minor modification is governed by the Samelia ordinance, section 152.064?
I don't know that there's any objection to that, Mr. Lemke. You know, that's what we have been working on.
Okay, fair enough.
By, by Mr. McCarthy and his staff report.
Okay, I'm going to assume that's what governs here unless somebody tells me I'm wrong. Then my other question for whomever is, on the copy of that ordinance that I received, section B, minor modifications, mine cuts off at sub subsection 1G, which ends in the disjunctive or suggesting that there is a sub subsection lowercase h that I don't have. I'm just wondering if somebody could tell me what that sub subsection h says, or if there isn't one.
You don't have the, well?
To try and be a little bit clearer, what I'm reading in 152064B1, it goes down to sub subsection G. This is lists of minor modifications. And says minor modification in off-street parking, semicolon, or. And then my document, exhibit eight, the next, the next thing I have on the next page is subsection two. That or kind of implies to me that there is a subsection B1H that I'm not seeing.
Okay.
Maybe there isn't, but.
Yeah, I'll confirm that. Let's see.
I'd just like to know, because if that, if there is a B1H like Henry, then that would logically be another example of something that the ordinance would deem a minor modification, which could be some relevant guidance here.
Mr. Lemke, and the code that I have, the copy that I have, there is no subparaphrase h.
Yours? Yours ends with sub, subparaphrase G, ending with the word or also?
That's correct, sir.
Mr. McCarthy, I'm sorry, Mr. Lemke, can I raise a follow-up question with Mr. McCarthy?
I will actually, so I've, I pulled up the official resolution, the official Amelia resolution. It does in fact end with the word or. And the next page begins with the number two.
So that's what, Mr. McCarthy, that's exactly what I was going to say. I have, I have your zoning code in front of me.
Okay, well, wouldn't be the first time I've seen that, but I just wanted to be clear since the or was suggestive, there might be another subparaphrase, but I appreciate the clarification. Thank you very much, John.
This is Ryan. I have a question for Mr. Ritchie. You know, on one hand, I'm, I understand the applicant's point of view here. All they did is draw some lot lines, and the practical implication of such seems pretty benign to the development plan that was previously approved. On the other hand, I'm very mindful of the slide that Eddie had up related to the literal interpretation of zoning code and the ability of staff to, I'm paraphrasing here, set lot lines or make changes to lot lines, that sort of thing. So without, particularly without the board's involvement. So for clarity, Mr. Ritchie, are we, as a BZA entity, empowered to do that?
Thanks for that question. My name is Warren Ritchie. I'm Tom Keating's law partner. Tom is unable to be with you all this evening, and I'm pinch hitting, but I am familiar with the project. I'm familiar with the financing considerations in the code and the determination by the zoning administrator. I don't think he had any choice because of the, the, the nature of the change, basically, from condominium to land minimum to, and at his, through his analysis before additional information was provided for him to determine that it was a requested modification that we considered major. However, once one peruses the information that was submitted by the appellate, the applicant, I think there's additional information that could lead the board as a quasi-judicial body to kind of determine that really in the grand scheme of things, this is a minor modification, looking at it in toto. And building on the idea that this is, you're kind of a judicial body, our offices has come to the conclusion that we would hope that we could enter into almost an agreed entry or decision to submit to the board, the, consider this as a minor modification request to be approved by the zoning administrator, incorporating all of the attachments and the appeal that was submitted in toto as the sort of the teeth that ensures the township that the project will move forward on the basis is submitted before you this evening. I hope I addressing your question.
Excuse me, sir, this is Lemke again, but isn't the issue that we're really deciding tonight simply a question of who decides rather than whether these changes are good or bad? But isn't it really a question of whether Mr. McCarthy makes the decision on that, or whether it goes to the zoning commission and ultimately to the elected board of township trustees?
Well, he made the decision that this, based on the information submitted to him initially, that this was a major modification. That is what is being appealed before you.
Correct. And, and the consequence of deciding this is a major modification means the modification would be reviewed by the zoning commission and ultimately have to be approved by them and approved by the elected board of township trustees. Am I correct about that?
Well, you're correct. Subject, of course, to whatever action the applicant appellate might take in challenging that, that finding, which I guess they'd have their right to do. But I think when you look at the the modifications and you look at the minimal change, after all, the change is one of whether the land beneath the buildings is owned by the condo association, or whether the land beneath the building is owned by the individual unit owners. I think that could be considered as a minor modification, all other things being kept the same.
And Mr. Warren, to be clear here, this is Fred Hayes. Staff, it clearly states that this is a major modification, but the township legal advice then is coming in with a change of that recommendation to this board. Am I clear on that?
Yes, I don't want to mince words on that. We think that the appellate, the applicant here has submitted enough information that was not available to the zoning administrator initially, but is now available to all, that you could rightfully determine this to be a minor modification.
Okay, and back to Mr. Lemke's question. I think it is this board's not only right, but position that has to come to a conclusion of whether this is a major or minor modification, and then proceed on from there with that finding. Is that correct?
Yes, I think that's the, that's the narrow decision to be made. But to, but I'd like to state that if the board was to determine that the appellate, that the appeal should be granted and that this should be considered a minor modification, I would want that finding and would recommend that that finding be so clear that the decision of the board was, or the board was based on all of this supplemental information that has been filed with the township and with planning and zoning department, so that we can ensure that the project is, is laid out before you this evening will be followed and carried through.
Mr. Ritchie, to that end, and these are in discussions that I had had with Mr. Keating. Of course, nothing was agreed to. It was just a suggestion I had made to him and also for the board's information. One of the things that I had mentioned to Mr. Keating, and that it could very well have been in some correspondence, was that the subdivision plat that creates the lots, everybody knows on this call knows what a subdivision plat is, would reference that, Mr. Ritchie. It would reference either the resolution, it would reference subject to, you know, in accordance with resolution, such and such, and whatever detail you feel comfortable with in presenting to the board for final approval would be cross-referenced both in the subdivision plat as well. as well as the declaration. So the township would have some comfort, uh, level in, uh, maintaining jurisdiction over this.
Thank you.
Forevermore.
Yeah, forevermore.
When we're long gone.
You know, just so I, I can add in, just so that, you know, some, some more of this gray area is filled in a little bit. You know, the, the way that when we make a decision for at a staff level, we understand that there are frequently a lot of undercurrents and, um, there's a lot of soft doc documentation that generally goes into creating a regulation. In, in this particular circumstance, we, we adopt that, well, we, we were given the Amelia zoning ordinance, which we did not craft as a community, but we adopted due to, um, kind of absorbing the, the Amelia village. And as a result, you know, we, we've had to enforce it accordingly. And, and one of the things is, is just acknowledging that maybe, you know, sometimes regulations have a disconnect between the intent and then the actual black and white letter of the law that is, that actually makes it onto the document. And so it, it inevitably we end up in a, in a circumstance like this where staff has to stay as close to a literal interpretation as possible, knowing that, you know, the reason oftentimes, the reason why we have these boards is to, um, really get at the core intent and substance behind the regulation, like what, what, what are we preventing? What, what are we protecting? All those sorts of things. And, and from a general perspective, it, based on the documentation that staff has received, you know, it's very easy for me to conclude that there doesn't appear to be a material external, um, impact to, to adjoining properties or neighbors. But at the same time, it, it, it was, it's clear to staff that by the, you know, by reading the literal line-by-line interpretation of the regulation, uh, we, we came to the conclusion that we did at the time.
Eddie, uh, I'm not sure where we are in the presentation and the questions or, uh, in the whole process here, but, uh, uh, if it's okay, I want to ask you a couple of questions here. Um, in, in, in terms of, I understand exactly where you came to the conclusion that you came to. Um, but I, I think we ought to take a look at, uh, page fifty-four of your packet that you sent out a week ago. Um, and then, you know, I stumbled across this too. It may be, may have to do with, uh, Mr. Lemke's question. There is a, a sub, sub, uh, paragraph H, but it, it talks about the criteria for major modifications. And I want to check to make sure that we are clear on, is there any increase in density here caused by these plans changes?
No, there is not.
Okay. Any changes in use?
There is not.
And any outside boundaries of the, uh, R P U D?
Those appear to remain the same.
Okay. Uh, significant modifications of the type, location and amount of land, uh, designated for a specific land use or, or a common open space. Eddie, I, I know that you had a question on the open space, but a, a further question on this one is that, uh, under the condominium rules, uh, the, uh, the, the occupant never really had use of the front or backyard, uh, more than personal use and could not put any, uh, uh, accessory buildings or any other things on it without the HOA approval of it. Um, and so the change in the lot lines has a technical change in the open space. But is there any real change in what could be viewed as a common open space when an outsider came and looked at the development?
You know, so based upon the, uh, the documentation submitted by the applicant, particularly discussions this evening, it, it doesn't appear that there's a material change to the open space. It appeared to have been a, uh, a calculation, uh, a way that the calculation was being processed initially, which created.
Yes. And, and to administer this, a further question for you, Eddie, is that, um, our administration rules on condominiums are clear and easy. Do we have the same kinds of, of understanding and ability to administer land dominiums? Or is that part of the issue here?
So that, that was part of the, so that's part of the issue, right? So it, there is no, again, in this circumstance, there doesn't appear to be a functional issue. And, and now the difference being that in the event that the land dominiums were to come through as currently proposed initially, we would have had a discussion regarding setbacks and, and, and lot sizes being delineated and so forth. That, that would have just been a, a discussion with regard to how are accessory structures going to be permitted in the event that we're, we're unclear on what the setbacks are. You know, that's part of the discussion we would have with the zoning commission. Well, after this change was proposed at the design plan phase, um, you know, the applicant has, has given us their word that external modifications are a moot point because there are no external modifications. There, there, um, accessory structures and so forth are not permitted at all. Staff's apprehension there, while that does soothe our concern, staff's apprehension is that, well, we don't have the ability at the staff level to guarantee that that actually comes to fruition. We, we would have their word and it might be in, in an HOA document, but the HOA document is subject to change and is out of the jurisdiction of, of staff in that, in that sense. So that, so staff says, okay, you know, that's great. That solves, that, that, that solves all the spirit and intent issues, but it doesn't pull staff out of this obligation to say, hey, you know, zoning commission and whomever else are really the decision makers, uh, theoretically speaking, even though the, from a legal perspective, the impacts appear to have been mitigated.
And, uh, and Mr. McCarthy, if I could, it can just interject something. I think you're, you're facing the, the same issues, be it a condominium or a land dominium. You know, how, how does the township maintain jurisdiction? Want a couple of things, you're, you're, the, the current regulations under your zoning code regarding accessory structure, accessory structures, but, but even that, I, I, I think, you know, if we specifically delineate, represent in the legal documents that this is subject to, in the subdivision plat, be it in the, the declaration, that it, yes, you can't change a declaration, you can't change a subdivision. That's why the suggestion was let's put it on the subdivision plat because that cannot be changed. And that way, if we have subject to your, your conditions in, uh, preparation of the evolution, either by, you know, Mr. Keating or Mr., um, Ritchie, then I think you would maintain jurisdiction because that plat can't be changed.
Right, yep. And, and, and getting into the weeds on it, a circumstance whereby, uh, you know, someone wanted to add a fence on, on one of the small property lines or someone wanted to put in a, a small outbuilding. We, you know, under the initial cert, under the initial approval, we would just, we would have used the setbacks that were just shown initially because they, they would have been applicable. They would have, they would have been fine. But under this agreement, it appears that you're saying fences, sheds, all that, none, none of that is, is anything that's permitted.
Correct.
And it, and it, and it will just be stated on the plat as such.
Correct.
That would be something we would just, you know, we could conceivably just condition any sort of decisions based off of that.
Well, and, and further to that, Eddie, uh, yeah, this board would normally take up issues of, uh, accessory structures, fences and, and, uh, and, and lighting and things like that. But all of that is being turned over to the HOA document. They may choose to accept some future proposal and it never comes back to the BZA. But the BZA's function, as, as I understand it, and, and correct me, Warren, if I'm wrong on this one, um, is, is that it, we're, we're doing, uh, the reviews of proposals like this for the public good, what's good for the community. Um, and the HOA has really taken over that responsibility in the future. If that was, uh, if any changes and any approvals for things like that would happen in the future. Have I got that about right?
Well, it, um, uh, I think that was directed to me. My, my point would be that, um, if there was any change, uh, attempted down the road, we have the documents on file forming the basis for your decision if the board's decision is to find this to be a minor modification. In addition to whatever notations were on the recorded plat. And, uh, if your decision this evening was based upon the, uh, documents submitted to you as part of the appeal application, uh, I think you have, um, uh, there, the township has significant uh, grounds to, uh, enforce, um, uh, these, um, the, the basis upon which your decision would be made.
And you still have your accessory, uh, structure or your accessory use, um, prohibitions or qualifications under your zoning code?
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. Uh, before I open this up to any public comments, does the applicant wish to make any more, uh, statements or share any more information?
No, I think we've covered, um, pretty much everything that we were going to mention. Um, I just, yeah, I mean, I think everybody has an idea of, or a very good understanding of what we're trying to do. And, you know, nothing, nothing we're doing should have any impact on the, it should have no different impact on the surrounding properties that, that the original plan would have. So I think everybody has an understanding of that. I don't think we have anything else to add.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to open up, uh, the hearing to public comment. Is there anybody online that would like to do so? And Eddie, let's, uh, allow maybe thirty seconds, just in case somebody's having trouble cooking in or.
Sure. Yeah, if, if you wish to speak, it's, um, if you want to utilize in the producer, participant panel, press raise your hand. Um, you could send a note or a chat message to, um, any of the co-hosts, including myself, or, uh, you press, if you can press star nine, let us know if you want to comment.
Eddie, I see a, an M, a, and a Rene Gerber that are still muted and have no video, so I don't know how they raise their hand.
I can, um, Hi, Ms. Gerber.
Hi, Eddie. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm good.
Do you, uh, do you have any comments or do you want us to, to leave you alone?
No. No, I don't, I don't have anything right now. I think that's pertinent to your guys' decision, really. But thank you for offering that.
Sure thing.
Okay, Eddie, and no one else has, uh, expressed any interest in wanting to make a comment. Is that right?
Correct. Yep. I, um, I asked, I asked if, um, M would like to unmute and I think that they're all set, it appears.
Okay, uh, I guess with that in mind, at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to close public comment.
Moved.
Second.
All right, um, let's see here. Mrs. Holman?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Sander?
Yes.
And Mr. Holty?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Lemke as well.
Yes.
Okay. All right, motion passes.
Thank you all. Um, um, and I, I do want to give a, a special thanks to, to Eddie McCarthy throughout this process. Um, and this is really, you know, the, the board, I think, understands the work that he's done, but he has stayed with us and worked with us um, for probably the, the next, the last six weeks. And, um, I wanted to thank you all and especially to, to Mr. McCarthy, regardless of how the decision would have gone, um, but thank you all sincerely for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Is there any additional discussion by the board? Actually, I'd like to, to make a comment. Mr. Hayes, I think, uh, you know, your mention of the criteria for major, major modifications is, uh, has a lot of bearing here. And that is to say that I think what the applicant is proposing doesn't meet any of these criterias. In fact, just the opposite. Uh, uh, that said, uh, other comments or questions, um, um, regarding the proposal and.
Yes. Uh, both Mr. Holty and Mr. Hayes, uh, I'd like to point out that the criteria for major modification in the media ordinance is not an exclusive list. If you read it, it says, "Major modification shall be determined by the zoning administrator and include." Now, the word include implies this is not an exclusive list. So there could certainly be other things not in this set of A through H that could constitute a major modification. Uh, candidly, after having practiced law for almost thirty-six years, I'm aghast at the idea that how the property is going to be owned, particularly in a relatively intense setting like this, where you've got four different owners in the same building. Uh, a change in, in how the property is going to be owned could be characterized as anything other than major. But that's not the question. I mean, that's the question, the technical question we have to decide. The real question we have to decide here is not whether this is a good idea or a bad idea. The question that we're deciding is who decides that? If this is deemed to be a major modification, which I believe that beyond any remote question is, then this change goes to our zoning commission. They hold a hearing, say yes or no. Then it goes to the elected board of township trustees, the elected representatives, the people of Pierce Township. If we say this is a minor modification, this whole thing kind of stays under the radar screen. Eddie can approve it based on our, our ruling, of course, none of us are elected either, that this is only a minor modification. So it's really a question of who decides. Um, I think very strongly, sort of consistent with the idea that we are a small D democracy, this is a sufficient change that whether or not it should go forward on this basis should ultimately be approved by our elected township trustees. Therefore, I think, and for the other reasons I've stated, uh, I, there's no way I can come around to saying this is a minor modification. I just can't.
Mr. Lucky, even if the practical implications are nil?
Well, but, but they can never be nil because of the way the property is owned. That's a nice thing to say, but it can never really happen that way. Now, if the elected township trustees want, you know, people's elected representatives in this township want to conclude, well, we don't see the risks here as being sufficient to be worth worrying about, we're going to approve this. That's fine. That's the decision they're elected to make. As a non-elected official, I am very uncomfortable doing that.
And, and if I can reply to, to Mr. Lemke, I appreciate your, your comments. But again, I think just because of the ownership structure, it's still the exact same project. They, yes, the, the, under a land dominium, they will own a lot. And under the condominium, they effectively own a building, um, which is an undivided interest of one ninety-fourth, how many ever buildings there are. So I, I think just because of the ownership structure doesn't kick it back to a major modification. Because when you look at the issues of is it a major or a minor modification? And, uh, Eddie, I'm looking at one sixty-four, oh sixty-four right now. And maybe if you can, you know, highlight your screen, roll it, scroll it down a little bit so we can see oh sixty-four B. All of those, all of those items, um, and again, looking at subsection two, do not adversely impact upon adjacent property owners or alter the intent or spirit of the final development plan. There is nothing that has changed relative to the intent or spirit of the, the FDP rather than a land dominium versus a condominium. So that's the, the only change. It is the exact same project regardless of whether or not the structure of it, because if you have the condominium versus the land dominium, the HOA still maintains it one hundred percent. Because if you have the condominium versus the land dominium, the HOA still maintains it 100% without the ability of an owner to change anything.
If I can respond a little bit here, we are kind of mixing apples and oranges. If you look at section two there, what's up on the screen now? It says, the zoning administrator may approve minor modifications if he determines that it does not impact adversely impact upon adjacent property owners or alter the intent or spirit of the approved final development plan. To get to that point, you have to have already determined this is only a minor modification. That language does not influence the decision on whether or not it is a major or minor modification. That language assumes that the major minor decision has already been made. If you go back up to the criteria for major minor, neither one of them is stated as being as being exclusive. And none of the ones, the non-exclusive lists put here in the ordinance, at all address who owns the property and how.
Yeah, I and and I respectfully disagree because if you grow to this, go to the subsection A, major modifications, as we had indicated before, nothing has changed. It doesn't, even though it may not be exclusive, you know, what other criteria can you determine? Just because of the ownership structure? You know, if you check A through H, you know, if you check A through H, none of these apply. Not one single of these points apply.
Yeah, but A through H is not, that's not the exclusive list of factors.
Agreed, what other ones are there?
The ordinance says include, that clearly implies that other things can be considered in making the major minor determination. And I would respectfully submit that how the property is going to be owned, that when this was originally submitted to Amelia, they approved a condominium. Now we're talking about not a condominium. That may be fine, but that's a decision that should be made by a different body, which is all, which is the only effect of what we're deciding tonight is who decides whether this is okay or not. If we decide it's minor, then Eddie gets to decide it's okay. If we decide it's major, it goes to the township's elected trustees.
Yeah, I think that's the essential issue, Ray. And I, and again, I respectfully disagree because nothing has changed. I mean, if if you're saying that the reason why is because of the ownership structure, that has to be sent to the trustees, then again, I I I do disagree with that because there is no essential element here, not one that has changed on this plan.
Well, Mr. Paylor, I respectfully disagree with the proposition that how the properties can be owned, particularly in a situation like this, where you're talking four different owners in the same building, that that is not an essential change. It may be okay.
It's it's the it's the same thing. I I think it's, and again, I think it's form over function. I mean, you know, if you, the the condominium owner still owns that building, still owns it.
And now the condominium, the condominium owner also owns land, so they own more. It may be a perfectly okay setup. But I think that's something that a different body should decide and something that's a little bit more open and public, like the zoning commission and the board of township trustees, rather than simply our zoning staff and this appointed board of zoning appeals.
Mr. Ritchie, what's your your view on this?
Well, I I certainly don't want to be in a, um, try not to be an advocate, but I do want to advise the board of zoning appeals. It it seems to me that I I think of zoning as use primarily. And I don't see it, this is a change of use. I'm not sure that I agree with Mr. Lemke when he says, I mean, I respect your position. But when you say and include, I don't read that to say and and includes the following and other items. These are the major criteria that one would look at. So we in our office have come to the conclusion that the 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 primary use of the property, the layout of the property, how it affected adjacent property owners wasn't wasn't going to change one iota. As long as we could get decent insurances, that it was not going to change one iota. And we believe that the applicant here has provided that to the board.
And and your thoughts on whether this board is the the proper group to make this decision or has the wherewithal to make this decision? Just going back to elected officials?
Well, I I think you have the ability to make a determination as to whether the requested modification is to be considered a minor modification as opposed to a major modification. If you determine it to be a minor modification, then you grant the appeal and direct the zoning administrator to take those appropriate steps to protect the township pursuant to the application of the developer. If you make a determination that it is a major modification, then yes, then it it either, your decision is either appealed by this applicant or it then is referred to the zoning commission.
Ms. Holman, do you have feedback or comments?
I, where I am is that I'm looking at all these A, B, C, D, E, F, G's and we can't add something else in there. This is the, this is what we have to base our opinions on. And I agree that this should be, I I believe this is a minor change. When I read all the documents, that's what I came to the conclusion before this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Sander, how about you?
I'm I'm in the same camp. I I understand Ray's comments about number two and include. I think that's perhaps wording that that could muddy the waters. But I I'm leaning toward these being minor modifications.
Mr. Hayes?
There is a, under the list of major modifications, there is a line H and it does say significant modifications, eh, in any other respect. The the piece, and I appreciate, Mr. Lemke, your your point of view there. I thought it was terrific. It was it was good, very good. But the piece that I come back to is, eh, we are not judging this on a ownership issues. We are judging this on a zoning, eh, land use and eh, and zoning. That is setbacks and the rest of the normal requirements that we work with. And eh, yeah, even even with the ownership piece, eh, the ownership piece is very significant, I agree. But probably more for the developer than it is from a zoning impact. They could, if they can sell the property in some other fashion, like a land dominium, eh, then I think that they are taking the risk there. From a zoning standpoint, eh, I think this is coming down to be exactly what was approved by the by the Amelia folks and then also approved indirectly by the trustees when they passed the resolution that they would follow through on any of the things that were approved by Amelia. So I am very much leaning towards eh, eh, towards moving that this is a minor modification, a set of minor modifications.
Is there any other, any other feedback from the board? Or may I entertain a a motion to approve or deny the submission?
Well, I'll give it a try. Hey, Hayes here, that I move that this board eh, declare or find that the modifications proposed by eh, the appellant be declared minor in nature after reviewing the details of all of the newly submitted information that should be included with this eh, with this motion.
This is Bob, I second that motion.
And can I interject? This is Warren Ritchie, um, that you consider voting on the motion that or including language this says and that the appeal is granted. So that's crystal clear.
Eddie, you can capture that?
Yep.
Okay, eh, with with Mr. Ritchie's addendum captured, eh, can we get a roll call on that?
Sure. And and just for just for clarification, Mr. Ritchie, are you comfortable with the the statement, including newly submitted documentation as as it pertains to the HOA documents? Is that HOA documents or an open space plan or?
Uh, well, I it'd be, you know, in the complete package that was submitted, including the HOA documents, the suggested and and also that supplemental, just not sure it was clear to the board that the document that was titled factual and legal issues, those were questions that our office promulgated and then the answers were submitted by the the appellant applicant, which we thought would help the board, but I'd like that to be part of the record also.
Okay, and ju- just just for the record and for the minutes, my understanding, as far as in for as as far as enforcement will go, is that the plat is going to be notated to the effect of no external modifications to the to the land dominium structures are permitted, which which would also necessarily include it. My understanding is accessory accessory structures are also not a contemplated permitted use. Is that?
I think that's the intention that they be included. And we also discussed the eh, the revision of the subdivision plan.
Okay.
I guess before we vote, I would like to hear the, all the nitpickings of it.
I agree.
Yeah, I think I I think I do. So, um, Mr. Hayes has proposed a motion to grant the appeal to further classify the applicant's request as a minor modification to include newly submitted HOA documents, factual and legal issues, considering that no external struc, no external modifications or additional structures are permitted in the condominium, land dominium component of of the development.
Sounds good to me.
And that the subdivision plan be revised accordingly?
Okay, that's a good, that's a really important point, it's a good one.
And are we saying that all these additional materials are the basis upon which this board is apparently going to vote? This is a minor modification?
I think that's correct, yes. That we are relying on on eh, on on this information and especially the articles coming out of the old Amelia ordinances.
All right, uh, ready for the roll call? Mrs. Mrs. Holman?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Aye.
Mr. Sander?
Yes.
Mr. Holty?
Yes.
And Mr. Lemke?
No.
Motion passes four to one.
Is there any other business we have to discuss?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay, I want to thank, uh, before we entertain a motion to adjourn, I want to thank Glen Mary Development and all the participants for for dialing in and zooming in as well as the the board members. Can I get a a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
And I will, Eddie?
Okay. Thank you all. Mr. Hayes?
Aye.
Mr. Sander?
Yes.
Mr. Holty?
Yes.
Mr. Lemke?
Yes.
And Mrs. Holman?
Yes.
Okay, and the motion passes.
Okay.
Take care, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.